Okay, we're going to start the meeting and I'm just gonna let you all know that we have a short board tonight. There's only three of us here. There's a possibility one or two may show up a little bit later. But right now, we're three, which means that any vote we take tonight needs to be unanimous. If one person votes against your application, your application fails. You have the option to stay here tonight and let the three of us hear your application, or you can delay your application till next month. So I'll give you a minute to think about that. And does anybody think they want to delay it a month, or do you just want to take your Everybody's gonna stick with it?
Yeah, we're sticking with it.
Okay, alright. Okay, then I'll call the, well, I think I already called the meeting to order. So roll call.
Roland Mayhew.
Yeah.
Ori Gibbs.
Yeah.
Suzanne Purley.
Here.
And with us tonight, we have Dean Trefitham, the Planning Director, and I, Robert Moore, will be doing the minutes.
Okay.
Minutes.
Okay, so, yeah, I was just reading down. So the minutes, we have the minutes from the previous meeting. They were all sent to you. They were all reviewed. Does anybody have any changes to make, or if not, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I move we accept the minutes.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Our first hearing tonight is 416 Leyton Ave. Could you come up and go over things with us again? I know you were here last month, and we asked you to provide some more information, but you did. Thank you for that.
Do I give you guys this?
Yeah, I can pass.
What is it?
Shoreline. Actually, I might as well give it these two.
This is...
Enough?
This is just, this looks like it's...
Oh, we just got one copy. Okay.
Yeah, that's the way it printed out. I'm not sure why.
Alright, so we'll just certify that you have a copy of, what exactly do you have a copy of?
Shoreline Protection.
I know, but is it the permit by notification? Has it been approved?
Yeah, DBN.
Yep.
Alright, so we'll let the minutes show that the applicant has submitted the wetlands permit by notification from DES. Which is one hurdle. Okay, you weren't here last month, but we just asked the application, the applicant to come back with a little more detailed plan than the first one that was originally submitted, which, which he did. And so, do you just want to go over it one more time with us, what exactly you want to do?
Yeah, I think you guys wanted more information on the garage, so...
Pouring water before we speak.
Sure, okay.
There are two situations on this. Are we taking them at both together?
Oh, yeah. Okay, let me just go back. Okay, so this application is for a, is for, actually, I guess there are two variances. One is from Section 235-35A setbacks, and for the, for the garage. And the second one is 235-19, the shoreline, variance for, from the 50-foot shoreline requirement. So can we combine them, or should we do them separately? All as one?
That would be your choice. You could handle the, them individually and take separate votes, because they really are two separate variances.
Okay.
I think that's probably the cleanest way to go and the clearest way.
Okay, okay. So you can discuss everything that you're gonna do.
Sure.
And then we'll take them up separately.
Right.
And could you share those pictures with us?
Yeah. Those are just the properties left and right of the property that I'm working on, to show that they have two-story garages as well.
Oh, okay. So these are just other properties on the street?
Yeah.
Alright, okay, go ahead.
So that's it. So the second story in the garage provided more detailed measurements for the setbacks that you guys had wanted, and I also have the permit for the shoreline. I'm not sure what else you might need.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
The, so the garage exists, and you're putting a second floor on it.
Correct.
So it's already there.
Correct.
And all you're doing is going up.
Yes.
And it's a 26 by 26 garage, and it's gonna be used for storage only.
Correct.
No living quarters.
No.
You can't move it back any further, because you've got sheer drop-off right in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't think they want to spend that money either.
So it's the, the first variance would be the setbacks on this are the front and S, A and B, so front and side.
Side.
Front and side setbacks. So that's, that's pretty clear. And the second variance, looks like the house already exists in the 50-foot setback.
Correct.
And you're just adding...
Adding a deck that was within the 50-foot buffer.
And the size of the deck, is that?
Looks like 12 by 22.
12 by 22.
12 by 22, okay. So that's all clear. How far into the 50-foot shoreline are we, do you think?
I would say, I mean, looking at this. Yeah, probably 18, 16, somewhere in there.
But then actually...
Probably about, yeah, probably about 18 feet.
It's about the same as the house, really.
Right. Okay.
Now, I went up there last month.
Oh, it says here, 12 foot, 12 feet into shoreline.
I went up there last month, and I'm trying to remember, and I can't. I went up there again yesterday, and it looked like there's some work that's been done since last month.
Yeah.
Saw the tubes, are they new?
They are.
And you took down some of the wall, some of the vinyl siding.
Yes. Yeah, you approved that the last time I was here.
That's what we approved last month.
Correct.
We didn't approve anything last month.
No, I don't remember that.
I got a building permit.
He came in for a separate building permit, just for the kitchen addition that he's doing.
Because the kitchen area, it looks like, is complete, doesn't need the variance.
Yeah, I thought I needed a variance for the kitchen. You guys told me I didn't, so I got the permit the next day or next week.
So we're all good with that?
So that's all.
Okay.
So the kitchen's approved?
Yes.
Yeah, because the kitchen isn't, yeah.
Kitchen isn't in the setback.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions right now?
The only thing we're approving tonight, or discussing tonight, is the deck and...
Garage, correct.
Okay. If you want to have a seat, I'm gonna open it up to the public. At this point, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against this application? Please come forward. Let the record show that nobody did come forward, but I want to enter into the record that we did get a letter from...
David Gresky, isn't it? The Gresky family tells?
Yeah. No, I can't find it.
I can't either. I remember copying it, putting it in the packet.
Okay, we did get a letter from the neighbor, David Gresky, one of the Butters, and it should be in the file. Oh, I've got it right here.
No.
This is the letter giving him authority to...
Oh, yeah, there, no, this is it. As next-door neighbors, we support the variance to build a kitchen addition deck and to add the second story to the garage.
Okay.
So it's there.
So anyway, we did get one letter.
From, yes.
David Gresky.
Yes.
The neighbor. So just to note that that, he did approve, because, and other than that, there's no objection. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Does anybody have any issues with either of these?
I don't have.
No, I don't have any problem with either one of them.
Okay. I think, you know, again, I'll just state, this is certainly a residential use in a residential district, and it's, it's not, I think it's, it, justice is done by granting both these...
More than, more than reasonable.
More than reasonable, and, and now that we have the more information that we need, and we understand what is being, what is being proposed. So I guess, if there's no further discussion, I could entertain a motion. We would do the, the setbacks for the garage, for the second story garage, front and side setbacks for the, for the garage first, okay?
Let's see, am I, did they do this? Did they do them? They did do them the same. I would make a motion to approve the variance from 235-35A and B for the proposed second story addition to the garage. It's going to, it will extend, it will be built over an existing garage as storage only. The existing garage already extends into the 25-foot side setback, and it's within the 40-foot front setback. No change is being made to the, no additional encroachment into the setback is being made. It's not contrary to the public interest. The proposed addition to the garage will not impact the appearance of the neighborhood or the quality of the neighborhood in any way. No extra demand on any resources. The spirit of the ordinance is observed in that it doesn't alter the character of the neighborhood at all. Abutting properties and other properties in the neighborhood have two-story garages, and this is only going to be used for storage. Substantial justice is done in allowing the applicant to utilize, make the most utilization out of his garage. The surrounding property's value will not be diminished. It will bring it actually more into conformance with some of the abutting properties. And literal, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship in that the garage is already existing. The property itself has some steep drop-offs, and the existing envelope to build in would be small, is small, anyway.
Okay.
Second.
Second? All in favor? Okay, so that's one. And the second variance is from Section 235-19, to allow the construction of a deck in the shoreline protection district. And I will go ahead and make that motion to approve the construction of a 12 by 20-foot, 22-foot deck attached to the existing residence in the shoreline district, with noting that the permit by notification has been received from the Department of Environmental Services. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest and spirits of the ordinance is observed. Again, this does not really have any effect on the neighborhood. The house already exists in the shoreline, shoreline setback, and so adding a deck will have very little impact, additional impact on the area. Substantial justice is done. The use is consistent with the current, the area's current use. I mean, this is a shoreline, a lakefront home. It's, so the use is consistent with the neighborhood, and will do no harm to the general public. Surrounding properties will not be diminished. The hardship exists in that the, the house exists already, again, you know, within the 50-foot shoreline setback, and the only, and they're not putting the deck closer to the water, they're putting it on the side of the house, so they're not coming any further into the front setback from where the house is. So that's my motion.
Second.
Second? All in favor? Okay, approved. Okay, you're all set.
I just have one question. Do I need another permit?
Oh, you can amend, amend the one you have.
Okay.
Just, just talk to people in code, and they can amend that one.
Okay. And we'll put all three things on the one?
Yeah.
Alright.
No, let me take that back. All you applied for before was just the kitchen, right?
Well, originally, I applied for all three.
Right.
So he's got two building permits he has actually applied for already right now. One for all three of them, and then one just for the kitchen.
Alright, so amend the one that has all three, because you've already got the one for the kitchen. Amend that one, and that's already pending, and, and that will take care of those two. That's fine.
Okay. Alright, thanks. See you.
Thank you. Okay, our next application is 35 Massachusetts Ave. Who's here to representing? Please come forward and state your name for the record, and tell us what you'd like to do.
Would you move the mic in a little closer?
Oh, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, so I'm Lindsay Stiles. This is my husband, John Stiles, and we are asking for variance to the front setback in order to put a small 5 by 20 deck on the front of our house.
Okay, and this is just a, not an enclosed deck, it's just an open...
No, just an open one with hand railings that runs along the front of our house. We had brick stairs there previously that needed to be replaced as they were crumbling. So we decided we want it, we're asking to be able to build a deck in that space.
And so it's gonna come out five feet, it's gonna be attached to the house?
Five feet, so it's not gonna stick out any further than the stairs that were previously there, gonna stick out. It's just gonna be longer.
You already have it outlined.
Yes.
That's, that's going to be the extent of the deck.
Yes.
Yes, sir, that's it, yeah.
Well, it's pretty straightforward. Anybody else, do you have any questions, or?
No.
Well, if nobody has any questions, I'm gonna, you can take a seat, and I'm gonna open it up to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against this application? Please come forward. Let the record show that nobody came forward to speak for or against this application. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
I went up to see it yesterday. It's pretty straightforward to me.
Really, really reasonable.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so, let's see, I've closed the public hearing. We've had some discussion. Again, this is really a harmless situation. It's adding a, a simple deck. It's totally appropriate, and totally, totally appropriate use, and it will help them enjoy their home.
First-time home.
And so, yeah, so, alright, and, so, I guess with that, I guess, if you have any closing comments, or anything else you want to add? No?
When we're done, do we gotta take pictures to show?
You'll be inspected by the, the building inspector will inspect.
After tonight, yeah. So we're, okay, so, alright, then, can I have a motion to, on this, on application, 2018-22, 35 Massachusetts Ave?
I move we approve it. I move we approve the motion.
You gotta go through all the criteria.
I'm going through it right now. The use is requested is specifically authorized in the chapter. It's building a small deck. And the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or undue, impair pedestrian safety. It's up against the house, and there's a lawn, and there's a...
You're reading special exception.
Yeah, you're doing special exception. You gotta do, you gotta do... You know what, the best thing to do is to just... I don't know, I guess. Okay, I find it. Okay, you can start right here. Spirit of the ordinance observed, substantial justice is done, just those right there.
Okay, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, and substantial justice is done, because it's not affecting, it's not gonna affect anybody else, and it's, the value of surrounding properties is not diminished. They won't even notice that it's there. Literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship, because that, the steps that are there have to be replaced, they're unusable. Literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. For purposes of this subparaphrase, unnecessary hardship means that owing to specific condition, conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of this provision to the property, and the proposed use is reasonable. It's a way to get ingress entrance into the house. You want, be ready?
Yeah, that's good. Second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. So you just follow up with the planning department tomorrow and get your permits?
Okay.
You're all set.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Welcome to my school. Thank you.
Okay, our next application is application 2018-23, 138 Sheridan Street. Would you please come forward and state your name, and tell us what you're planning to do.
Hi, I'm, can you come up? I'm Tina, and this is Robin Smith. We live at 138 Sheridan, and we're trying to make an apartment for my in-laws, his parents, who have become ill. And we'd like to get them closer, so we don't have to keep traveling, and it's easier to take care of them when they're right next to us.
Okay, so...
The only question I have is, you said your mother and father are 80 years old.
Mm-hmm.
I can emphasize with them. That is a long staircase to get to the second floor of that garage.
He would like, I have a very loud voice, so you have to bear with me. My father-in-law would like to put, like a stair step?
Yeah.
Is that what?
An electric stair lift. One of those electric stairs?
Mm-hmm.
Because that's what I have, I had thought the same thing.
Yeah.
And then, well, the, the logical answer would be to put in the electric stair, the chair that drives up.
We just didn't know if we needed a permit for that or anything yet, so we hadn't got that far. That was what he would like to put in.
That, that makes perfect sense to me. That, you would have to do that.
And that would be from the bottom of the garage, and it goes up the back there, yeah.
You have to do that.
On the inside, so that way they don't, they don't have to be in the weather either, so.
And you, and these plans are for 700 and just, right under the 750 square foot, you know?
743, it's just a pair under it.
Yeah, and, and it looks like you have substantial area for parking there. Are they, do they have a car, or?
They do. We're actually going to give them one of the parking bays in the garage, because then it will be easier. They can pull right in, go to the stair lift, and go up. And that way, also, we don't have, we don't have, because they're not great drivers. Sorry, not insulting. They just are not great drivers, so we would prefer just to keep them in there, and it's a straight back out for them, and a straight shot forward. If you look at the pictures, you'll, you could tell, it goes straight up to the, to the bay of the garage, and comes straight back down. Because his mom, we don't let her drive out of our driveway. His dad, we do, not his mom.
Well, again, this is pretty straightforward. It's located in an existing garage on the property. People have its own utilities and stuff, but it's your family, you'll be paying for everything, doesn't matter. People have its own utilities and stuff, but it's your family, you'll be paying for everything, doesn't matter, you could, as long as you're living in the house, you could rent it to anybody.
Well, no. Thanks, no. That's why we bought in a single-family home, we just didn't expect to have our in-laws.
But anyway, I just wanted to, um, to clarify that, so, but, um... I don't know, I don't have too many questions, it was pretty well, your, your drawing is good.
The two that I had, the two that I have have been answered, the, the drawing was excellent, the only question that I had, and that really doesn't matter, isn't apropos to the, to the application, was, I hate to think of the eighty-year-olds climbing those stairs, and room for parking, and when I saw the, just the, the overhead shot of the home itself, there's, there's plenty of room.
Oh, yeah.
For parking for a one-bedroom apartment, so tho, those were my only two questions, so.
All right. Did we miss anything, or you think we should?
No, I think we've...
Move on?
And there's nobody left to... Can you say anybody from the...
Is it normally this scarce in here? Okay.
I still have to sort of open it up to the public, so you can have a seat and I'm just gonna...
No, no, I just didn't know if it was normally, because...
It's quiet?
Yeah.
It's a very quiet night for us.
This is nice.
Yeah, you, you bet it is. Anyway, okay, um, we've had our little bit of a discussion and we're gonna open it up to the public, so anybody here that would like to speak for or against this application, please come forward. Let the record show that there's nobody here that will speak for or against this application. Board discussion, I think we've, uh, sort of agreed that this application was complete and, uh, we've had our questions answered and, um, it's totally, uh, follows the accessory dwelling unit, um, criteria that we, that was established for the city, so, um, with that, if you can have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application zero two zero one eight dash zero zero two three, uh, one thirty-eight Sheridan Street for an accessory dwelling unit above the, uh, existing garage to house their, uh, parents. Uh, it's a one-bedroom unit, um, the use requested is specifically authorized in the chapter, it's, uh, seven hundred and forty-three square feet, so it's slightly under the seven fifty that's in the ordinance, um, but close enough that I think it, it meets the criteria. The requested use will not create undue traffic ingestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, there at most would be one extra vehicle and, um, there's plenty of room for parking and it doesn't sound like the occupants will be doing a lot of driving on their own anyway. Uh, it will not overload public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system, uh, or a significant increase, no increase, that I can see in stormwater runoff, it's substantially the same building as exists now, just with an apartment in it, uh, and with one bedroom, that doesn't put a substantial burden on any of the, um, municipal services. The, any special provisions set forth in the chapter are fulfilled, it doesn't create an undue hazard to health, safety or general welfare of the public, it is not detrimental to, or out of character with the neighborhood, uh, the, the appro, proposed location is appropriate for the requested use and is permitted in this zone and it is, the use is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter and the master plan.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, you're all set.
Okay.
Check in with the planning department tomorrow and you're good to go.
Who would, by the way, give them great credit, kinda helped with what I was doing, they just walked me through.
Well, that's good.
They did a good job.
All right, other business, Mr. Planning Director?
Yes, I have a few items for you.
Okay.
Uh, the first one is, um, we are in the process of devising, uh, new forms for the applicants to fill out. And one of the things we're going to do is separate them out into individual forms, so if someone comes in for a variance, it'll only be variance stuff, and if someone comes in for a special exception, it'll only be that.
Very nice.
And then the, uh, potential waiver and et cetera, so that way, as we have a little bit of confusion and I will try to separate that out, in the meantime, we can make some of the, uh, places for them to write in a little bit bigger and, and, uh, I think it'll be a little bit clearer for the applicants and I think it'll be clearer for the board as, when you're, when you're looking at the applicants. And I forgot to bring the samples that we have created, but, uh...
Maybe just pass them by us?
I, I can, yes, I, my intention was to do that and I forgot to bring them, but, so I'll, I'll send them to you electronically, you know, we just send you a PDF and, and just take a look over, I don't think there'll be any issues, but wanted to run that by you.
And I just, and I, and I want to thank you for, like, filling in, it was, it's really just a big help to have the district and what you guys decided they needed a variance from, the section of the law. That was important and that was missing and now you've done it and it was great, when I sat down to go over everything, I could just go right to the section of the zoning ordinance and you guys decided somebody needed a variance from, so.
That is very helpful.
Just wanna say thank you.
Yeah. The next one is the two thousand nineteen schedule, um, basically every third, um, Monday of the month, with the exception of January and February, where we have always have, seem to have those holidays, and, um, we have also revised the filing deadline a little bit, um, instead of, we, we, we used to have it as the, uh, third Friday, I believe it was, of the, of the month, and what that does is it kind of, uh, sometimes we end up with like five weeks before the next meeting and sometimes we get...
Not so, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're, we've kinda jiggered the filing deadline a little bit so that it's more, we're just backed up from the actual date of the, of the next meeting to, to give us enough time to process the applications, get out the notice, notifications and those, those kinds of things, um...
And what do you think is a reasonable time for you to get the stuff to us? I mean, five weeks in advance isn't necessary, but...
Uh, this gives us like three to four, you know, and, and which is plenty of time for us to, um, process everything and get, get the agenda set, and as you know, we, we've gotta have things out like twelve days ahead of the meeting to meet the public notification deadlines and those kinds of things, so when that, when that occurs, we basically have the packet ready to go and so, that'll, that'll be helpful. Okay, um, next thing that I want to pass out to you and I'll share with the other board members electronically, just what they have. I wanted to share with you, this, uh, this is a legal opinion from our legal counsel concerning short-term rentals. And, uh, this has been, um, normally, uh, legal opinions are confidential, but the city council has decided to release this and make it public, so that, that's why you're getting it in this form. As you are probably aware, uh, the city is concerned about short-term rentals, uh, in particular problem houses that are, have presented themselves from the newer technology, Airbnb, the RBO and other, uh, these other online platforms that you can do for rentals. Uh, the city council has directed us to, um, enforce the zoning ordinance per the opinion of our legal counsel, and I have highlighted on here the pertinent, uh, you know, the bottom-line sentences. Uh, I encourage you to read the whole thing, but basically, um, we are terming, uh, the short-term rentals as a boarding, rooming or lodging house, that's the definition that we are using. And the other thing that is in here is then we've been directed by the, uh, city council to act only on complaints. So if someone is doing this and there are no issues and the neighbors are fine with it, we're not gonna do any active, uh, enforcement. Uh, we know that there are a few, uh, people that we have already cited as being in violation of the short-term rental, uh, situation, and a few of them have indicated that they will be pursuing variances. Uh, it's interesting to note that in other municipalities, the people have contended, uh, they have filed appeals to the zoning board that the zoning ordinance is being interpreted wrong or that the zoning official made a wrong interpretation or et cetera, and that's the tactic other municipalities have been presented with from the people who are doing short-term rentals. It's interesting to note that in, in the, so far anyway, everyone that we have contacted about this has said straight up, yep, that's what I'm doing, I didn't know it was a problem and they're gonna go the variance route, so, a little bit different, but that's okay.
Would it be possible for... We have to grasp this and since so many of us aren't here tonight, could we maybe have a half-hour session with you before the next meeting to go over things, or, or do you not think it, I mean, I just think you're throwing us to the wolves here?
Yeah, no, I, I don't, um, we... We could, uh, structure...
What are the criteria, I mean, wha, what do we do? I mean, what could it...
Well, they're applying for a variance and so you would use the criteria of, of the variance, and, um, if you'd like, I think we could structure the, um... We could do one of two things. We could structure, uh, next month's, because we believe we, do we have any next month? We do, we have one, right?
Three.
Three, we have three next month. So, um, we could put an agenda item early in the agenda before you're hearing any of the cases to kinda give you a summary, and I know that kinda leaves you kinda last, like last-minute information, but...
So we can't meet before the meeting, like we have in the past?
Uh, no, I don't think, I don't think we could justify having...
Like a work session?
We could do a workshop, I guess, if, um... We could do a workshop, it would be open to the public, but that's okay, we could do workshop, we could do that. The other option...
We'd have to do it, we'd have to do it here and with everybody present.
Correct, I mean, it wouldn't be open to the public, I mean, it wouldn't be a public participation or anything like that, but public would be, could be sitting in the audience and listening. The, the other option I was gonna give you is that I could give you, uh, you have the legal opinion, I could give you a summary of the enforcement action that we are taking so that you know how we've come to the point that, that we're at.
Yeah, I'd love that.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
And I, I just, use is permitted in the shorefront residential and commercial residential, but requires a site plan.
So one of the, one of the things to note, and I'll put this in a summary, but just while we're talking about it, one of the things to note in the, in the, in the state of New Hampshire, a, a short-term rental, which applies not just to, uh, real estate, but applies to a number of things, is a hundred and eighty-one days or less. So if you were to rent a car, for instance, if you were like, like you do when you go to the airport, when you're traveling, you rent a car for a week or whatever, you pay the, the rental tax, because it's a... If you were to rent a car for more than a hundred and eighty-one days, for whatever reason, you would not have to pay that tax. Same thing is true on real estate, if you, uh, rent a house, uh, if like on a one-year lease, uh, there's no rooms and meals tax applied to that rental, but if it's less than one hundred and eighty-one days, then in theory you're supposed to be paying the nine percent rooms and meals tax. Uh, so that's, that's where the short-term rental cutoff is and that's, that's the, uh, information that, that we are using, that's the criteria that we're using for short-term rentals, so, um, means that anybody that's renting for a shorter period of time is, in certain zones, are in violation of the zoning ordinance, according to our legal counsel. That's right.
Do they still have to follow the zoning ordinances, for instance, if, if there's a zone in which, um, boarding houses and lodging houses are not allowed and a person wants to come in and put in one of these...
Right.
Does the zoning law oversee, uh...
Yes, it does.
That's what they're saying, so that that's what they're gonna come and ask for a variance from that?
Right, they're gonna ask for a variance, so it's, I mean, just as your other vari, I mean, your typical variances are for setbacks, you know, you get a lot of those, so...
Yeah.
The zoning ordinance says you need to have X number of feet on the side of your house and so many feet in the front of your house and so many feet on, to the rear of your house, and if you're going to violate that, then, uh, you need a variance. Uh, we have use categories, um, uh, we have, uh... That you have given variances for, I, I will use as example the towing company that we gave a variance to, uh, about a, a year ago, uh, on Wilson Court, where they're a towing company and the towing company was grandfathered, but they're also storing a lot of vehicles and they're not licensed as a junkyard or anything like that, so therefore they needed a variance. So that's a use variance and we do those from time to times, you do density variances, uh, use the case of the house on Union Avenue that was an office down and a, an apartment up and they wanted to make it two apartments, so they needed a variance for that because they have a very small lot. So there's, you know, you have your variance, different kinds of variances to...
So we already know the neighbors are complaining about this.
Right.
And so then the neighbors all show up and they're all against this thing.
Yep.
And our hands are tied.
Well, um...
It's like we have to do it.
I, I don't, no, I, I don't, I don't think you have to grant it, just as you don't have to grant any other variance.
I, I wouldn't think that we, if, when they present these applications, I wanna see them answer the criteria. I wanna, I wanna see them prove their case and they have to do that.
Right.
If they can prove the case that it meets the criteria that we have for a variance...
And then the, the other...
Then yes, but if it doesn't, but if we say, well, that's...
Where, where is any of these, where are any, it, where is the hardship in anybody that wants to have a B, Airbnb? It's totally, there's no hardship involved, it's totally financial.
That would be, that would, to me, that's gonna be the hardest thing that they're gonna have to meet, is how, how do you meet hardship?
Right, uh, no argument on that, on that case.
I, I don't see how any of this is gonna be hard.
If, if you were to approve a variance for, and, and you're gonna...
You approve one, we're stuck.
I, I don't think so, because I think there's different circumstances compared, within, there are different circumstances and, and there are also different zones and some of these are in, are in different zones.
If it's in a shorefront residential, it would depend, to me, on the size, commercial resort is entirely different.
They need it, right.
That, that to me is entirely different, that almost strikes me as, if that's what you expect.
Yeah, in some zones it is a conditional use, which would be the planning board.
Yeah.
And in some zones, it's a special exception.
Yeah.
And in most zones, it is not permitted.
Yeah.
So, um... So you're gonna see, some, some of them are gonna be coming in for the special exception because they're in a zone that is a special exception, some of them are in zones where it's not permitted, so it would be a variance, and the ones where it's a conditional use, they would have to go to the planning board for those things. But if you were to approve a variance or a special exception, as you have done in the past on other cases, you could, uh, set conditions and we would be more than willing to suggest conditions to you for the various applications. The biggest issues that we have had with these, the ones that have been complained about, uh, is noise and parking, those are the biggest issues. Now, noise is, is, is somewhat a subjective thing, but parking is not.
Parking, no, parking is...
I mean, you, you've got a single-family house on a small lot and they basically have a single driveway, it's like, how many cars can you get in there, you can get one or two, but if they're, think they're renting to eighteen people, it's certainly more than one or two cars.
And there's no like minimum size to an apartment or, and you can let, and somebody have an Airbnb in like a two-hundred square foot house?
There, there are, um, there are some standards in terms of square footage per person, um, so I will, when I do my summary, I will bring that all out to you. Uh, I will be, uh, point-blank and, and it's, it's, the city council has set the policy and it's their intention that, that we will enforce.
Is there a policy that they want to have them?
No.
No, I think if it's, if, if we're gonna get stuck with making these decisions, then to me, it's up to the applicant to prove that they meet the criteria.
Yep.
And if they don't meet the criteria, they don't get the variance or the special exception.
Who sets the criteria?
The criteria are set forth in our ordinance. If they're applying for, for a special exception, then they have to meet AB three, on A through whatever.
It's pretty easy to meet those criteria.
Well, except, until you get...
Boarding house, rooming, lodging house?
They would have to meet the criteria that is set forth in the application and they'd have to give us proof that they do, and that includes the hardship. And that, I think, is where a lot of them are gonna fall, because there's just no hardship.
Right.
Because financial, financial gain does not constitute a hardship.
Isn't hardship supposed to be in the land?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
That's why I say financial gain.
And obviously, they, they have the opportunity to rent the house for long-term, if that's, if that's what they wanna do.
Or they have the opportunity to rent the house to, say, four people instead of twenty.
Well...
But, yeah, they have, if they still...
If it's on a short-term basis, they're still in violation technically.
Yes, if they, if they want, if they still feel they need, need to rent the house, then they rent it for long-term.
And what about occupancy limits and all that stuff, I mean, health concerns?
We do have a little bit of guidance from that, I will, I will put that all together, so we'll, we'll, let's do the workshop, I think that would be the easiest thing to do.
We just, we just, we need some guidance.
Do we, do we want to do that just before the meeting, or do you wanna do it an additional? Do we, do we want to do that just before the meeting or do you want to do it an additional night? I mean...
I mean, to me, it, it would be helpful to have it before, not, not the same night because I would like to have the guidance.
And then be able to think about it.
Be able to think about it when I'm reviewing the applications.
And not have all the applicants sitting...
And not have everybody sitting there while I'm trying to decide, well, do you really meet it or not?
Yep, okay.
I need more, I need more than a half an hour to decide whether...
Can we do maybe the Monday before or, I don't know what...
We can, uh, that would be a city council night, but we could maybe meet a little earlier.
Well, we could just need a little room.
And we could go to the little room, sure. Can we do six o'clock? Does that...
Yeah, yes.
Earlier, the better.
Yes, earlier, the earlier, the better, yes.
Let me just, hang on a second, I just gotta, what, um...
Anytime after four-thirty.
Let's see, December seventeenth is our next meeting?
Yep, so that would be the tenth.
Yeah?
That should be all right.
And we're saying we're doing it at six?
I, I, we can do it anytime you want. I mean, if you think everybody else can get here and...
I think the, most of us can get here. I think the chairman, we'll just have to tell him, you know. It, I wish our meetings were earlier anyway.
Well, I do. I, so do I. I, I wish that we could start at six. Or six thirty, yeah.
You could, you could change your bylaws if you wanted to.
Six would be nice for me.
Yeah, it would be great for me.
No, it's al, it's always Steve works.
Yeah.
He says he has to go home and have dinner.
That's what McDonald's is for now.
Thank you. You took the words right there. But anyway...
All right, so we'll do a workshop on the tenth at six o'clock.
At six o'clock, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
And Steve can get here.
The tenth of December at six o'clock here or in the room?
Uh, it'll be, be in, in the small room, yep.
Yep, that will work well.
All right, and I have one more thing, if you don't mind?
No.
Real quick. So as you know, Brandy left and we have been advertising and, uh, we have, uh, made a decision on a replacement for the assistant planner and that would be Rob.
See, you knew it.
We have also hired, pending background check, et cetera, uh, another individual to backfill the, the zoning technician, uh, position and they will be starting hopefully on December tenth.
Lucky them, just in time for the May.
Just in time, yep.
So... We won't see Rob anymore.
You will for probably the next meeting or so, because he's got a...
Well, congratulations, Rob.
He's gotta train his replacement to run the equipment and all that stuff and, I mean, I guess he could train me, but if I don't have to, I don't have to. He, anyway, in theory, he could train me. That remains to be seen, but anyway.
Anyway, change happens and, uh, well, that's nice that you, you got to, you got a promotion.
It's always nice to get a little promotion.
Yeah. I, I remember when you were hired and Dean said, you know, it's really not an easy feat